Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Lewiston City Council Workshop. Today is October 13th, 2020. We have two workshop items. The first one will be the Housing Committee update. And the second one will be information provided to the council on the police body cameras. So with that, if we could bring in Craig Sattlemeyer to the meeting, we'll do the Housing Committee update. And while we wait for the record, I've given Councilor Ray permission to participate without video this evening. So she's there listening and can respond, but will not be able to use her video tonight.
Craig and Heidi are now in the meeting.
All right, Craig, do you have video?
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is Craig Sattlemeyer. He's the Chair of the Lewiston Housing Committee. And you'll be presenting tonight for us.
That is correct.
All right, thank you, and take it away.
All right. And let's see, looks like I have screen sharing abilities. Dennis, is that how you'd like me to present, share from my screen, or were you gonna share it?
No, Craig, if you, if you're comfortable with doing it, we'll give you the, the controls to make that happen.
Yes, sir. Okay, just give me a moment. Sorry, just give me a second, get this worked out here. Is that all right for folks? Okay. And just give me one more moment to get mine. Okay. Okay, I'm ready. So thank you for your patience, everyone. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Craig Sattlemeyer. I'm the Chair of the Housing Committee for Lewiston. And we're honored to serve in the role of making recommendations to council based upon priorities that we identify in the community and also issues that council sends to us that they, that they would like our input on. We, when we began meeting, it was clear very quickly, and, and it'd also been identified by council, I believe, that the issue of homelessness is very important and urgent in our community. It was previously, and it is especially today. So that's the issue that we began with. And after some conversation within our committee and with experts in, in this work, serving unhoused people in our community, we have this series of recommendations that we've submitted to the council and that I will be reviewing with you. First, just a little bit of an introduction to the recommendations. So in Lewiston, we have had unhoused people in our community for a long time. In each year, hundreds of people experience homelessness in our community at some point during the year. Eleven years ago, we made a plan to end homelessness, and that plan is far from realized today. Struggles for people to obtain and maintain housing are often caused by increases in housing costs, reduced availability of affordable housing, and mental health, mental illness challenges that some tenants face. And these problems existed before COVID-19, and the severity is compounded by this pandemic. When our community members are unhoused, they are extremely vulnerable to illness. And the community at large is more vulnerable to transmission. Without shelter, people dealing with physical and mental illness can be very hard to serve. And most, most other aspects of their lives are difficult to manage. While there is a very small percentage of unhoused persons who are difficult to house and will often refuse services, most unhoused persons will quickly accept and transition into permanent and stable housing when provided the opportunity and the support. Lewiston has a few specialized shelters for youth and victims of violence that participate in, very directly, in numerous state systems to address homelessness. We also have a few shelters that are non-secular and do not participate fully or transparently with public institutions, nor with HMIS. And therefore, the volume and needs of the unhoused people they serve is not on record, nor are tools for serving the homeless made available to them. Sorry, nor are all tools for serving the homeless made available to them. While these shelters do provide an important service, it is not necessarily meeting all of the needs that we have. And overall, our system of support is fragmented. And I think a lot of folks who work in the field would agree with that. And it's something that is being worked to address. And when I say fragmented, I mean, we have a lot of different agents working on this and not necessarily a lot of coordination or sort of agreed upon measurements and standards. And so that, it makes it very hard to, to assess the status of this issue. From all that we understand, the wellness shelter operated by Community Concepts in collaboration with private consultants was a success. It offered safe and secure day shelter where visitors could receive services and remain physically distanced. And it offered 60 nighttime beds that also allowed for distance. Where one individual was found to have tested positive for COVID-19, they were quickly moved to an isolated place where they could quarantine. When the wellness shelter closed in July, approximately half of the unhoused persons staying there were set up with permanent housing, but not all of them. And the wellness shelter was entirely funded by main housing. While summer is an easier time to be unhoused than the winter, the closing of the wellness shelter was not done for lack of need. And we continue to have unhoused persons in need of help, and we believe it is in our community's best interest to provide that help. So the following are our recommendations for how best to address the needs of our unhoused community in the near term. And before I begin with the recommendations, any comments or questions so far?
I don't see any.
Okay, seeing none? Okay, so, so first, I'll, I'll just read aloud for the benefit of anyone just listening. So the, the headlines of each recommendation are, we're gonna talk about the city of Lewiston's role in this. Hotels as temporary shelter, increasing case management, and enhancing day shelter facilities, public bathrooms, supportive housing, permanent overnight low barrier shelters, and mitigating evictions. So with regards to the city of Lewiston's role, and I provide more detail in, in your, what you should have received in your packets with each recommendation. But we see the city of Lewiston is providing the role of staff participation with a regional strategy using CDBG and CARES Act funding to help pay for services to unhoused people, and also helping facilitate the utilization of main housing resources in our community. So this starts to speak to what I described earlier as sort of the fragmented nature of the way service delivery is, is currently taking place. We'd like to see staff, and I believe staff already is, you know, implementing to, to a fair degree, these recommendations as, as we speak. But we'd like to see staff participating more in regional strategies, so in Lewiston, Auburn, and just Dogon County, but especially with the state. I think the state is finally sort of revamping its approach, looking not just at service communities, but at the state as a whole in terms of, you know, where the need is, where the resources are, and, and how we strategize as a state, because clearly this is, you know, it's, it's been addressed sort of historically at, at the local level, but it's, it's a statewide issue. And we want to be a part of the solution and be able to have access to the resources that are available statewide and through the partnerships that we can form by doing that.
Absolutely. Did you have a question?
I did. I didn't get my hand up fast enough during that last round. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sattlemeyer, you talked about the fact that when the wellness shelter came to an end, that there were a number of people that were able to be housed, but there was a, many that were displaced, continued to be displaced. Do we have an idea of what that number is?
The, the report I have is that the shelter is open for 87 days. 138 people were experiencing homelessness that were served at that shelter. They served 60 guests per night. The, getting more directly to what you're asking for, 66% were connected with case management. 42% were connected with new housing. And did, was there another, did that, did I answer your question, or can you say it again in case I?
No, I think what you're saying is then, you know, 58% did not go into housing, is what I hear you saying. Is that accurate?
But yes, that's, that's, that's the number that I have here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions or clarification there?
I'll see.
Okay. Moving, moving on. So our next recommendation is that we think hotels as temporary shelter is the, the best solution within reach and can achieve a number of important goals. So we're recommending that contracts with one or more local hotels and motels and that, that those areas are used to provide shelter until those unhoused persons can secure permanent housing. So we see this as valuable. One, there's a lot of research, and I think a lot of it's sort of coming out of the, the response to trying to find non-congregate shelters for people who are unhoused amidst COVID. They're finding that these places actually had, you know, they've got the infrastructure there. They provide a degree of privacy that hasn't been available at many congregate shelters, and that yields better results in terms of health and wellness, in terms of case management, in terms of safety. And then, you know, the, I don't have these numbers for you, but I, our understanding is that the lodging industry is, is hurting right now and can benefit from the, the revenue from, from these contracts as well. So it can support local businesses and an industry that, you know, that we need, that we'd like to see continue in our communities. But, but the health and well-being of the people we're looking to shelters is of primary concern. Any, any questions or clarifying questions on, on that recommendation? Okay. So our next recommendation is we'd like to see support for the availability, availability of more e-shop navigators and mental health caseworkers. So both are important. It's a distinction that I was not familiar with before we, we dug into this, but it's an important one. Mental health caseworkers, I think, is pretty self-explanatory in terms of what they do, but they're, you know, they're focused on the mental health of the, the clients. They can make referrals, but they don't have all the tools available to them to actually help people obtain housing, either temporary or permanent housing. E-shop navigators have those tools and also can make, you know, referrals to mental health caseworkers. Sometimes the e-shop navigators are, are also mental health caseworkers. And you're probably wondering the acronym, what the acronym stands for. It stands for Emergency Shelter and Housing Assistance Program. So it's a state program. We have a much fewer number of e-shop navigators in our community than a community like Lewiston would typically have. And the reason for that is, as I stated earlier, our primary overnight shelters are not participating in a number of public programs and not getting access to all of the tools. And so those, those public, those general overnight shelters don't have e-shop navigators at those sites. We do have e-shop navigators that are working with primarily our specialized shelter services, so New Beginnings, Preble Street Veterans Services, and Safe Voices are some examples. So we think that, you know, this, this is really important to helping folks get access to resources to transitioning out of being homeless. And we think, again, similar to some of the other recommendations, we, we are already seeing some progress on this. As an example, I think the Lewiston Police Department has been incorporating more mental health, health caseworkers in the work that they do, including responding to circumstances involving people who are unhoused. That's a really important practice, and we'd like to see it expanded upon. Next recommendation is enhance day shelter facilities. So this is another thing that was, when we be, as a committee, when we began this work, somehow did not fully click until we dug into it. But we are very concerned about the fact that there really is no public warming shelter available as we're approaching the winter. And Trinity previously provided that service, and they cannot because of the current COVID safety restrictions. So it's, it's getting cold out. This is, this is a big concern. And we think it's very important that the city works to help identify what space could be, could adequately meet this need, looking at both public facilities and private that are locally available. We need to seek an experienced operator to help manage the space. And we also need, should be approaching the specialized shelters that we have to see, you know, what their plans are to enhance their, their services, their day services during the winter. And if there's anything we can do to support them or facilitate that. But this is, you know, this is something that's, I'm sure affecting people immediately. And it's gonna get much more severe as, as the winter approaches.
Okay, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, while, and I saw this in the notes as well, but while we're talking about warming shelters and those opportunities, I believe it was last summer, at the end of July in 2019, there was some talk about cooling centers as well for our community. And at the time, we had talked about how the library is somewhat available for that sort of space during operating hours. However, obviously, they are limited in scope, especially in COVID. But I just think if we're talking about climate change and the extremes that will be experienced over time, it's worth mentioning that at the same time here.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Just any other questions, Councilors? Sorry to cut you off, Craig, go ahead.
Not at all. All right. So the next recommendation is regarding public bathrooms. We believe the city should provide CDBG and/or CARES Act funding for a mobile public bathroom and shower facility until a permanent bathroom can be provided. The, we, we don't have a strong recommendation on, on the permanent public bathroom piece. But we think a, a mobile system would be very useful and and effective. And we know there's at least one group that's interested in providing that service, and they're looking for the resources to do it. This is something that we've, I, I've been hearing about the need for this for, I think, as long as I've lived in the community. And it seems, seems like something we can deliver on, especially if we have a group that's ready to help provide that service. Any questions before the next one?
Just, just to clarify, did you say you had, had a group that was able to provide that service?
Yes, my understanding, I'm, I'm not in touch with the group directly. I'm, I'm not gonna name them right now. But my understanding is that there is a group that is eager to help provide mobile public bathroom and shower facility locally, and they're interested in, you know, seeking CDBG money to, to do that. And we think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. This is a more general recommendation, but we believe the city should encourage development of more supportive housing that integrates case management and support with the housing itself. Takes a long time to develop housing. And most of our recommendations are related to urgent solutions, to urgent problems. But this is an important part of, of long-term solutions. So permanent overnight low barrier shelters, talked about a lot. It was a recommendation that came out of the plan to end homelessness, the 10-year plan to end homelessness that came out 11 years ago. We still don't have a permanent overnight low barrier shelter that's available to the, the general public. At this time, we believe the city should be fostering relationships with potential partners who could develop and operate such a shelter in our community and with service providers who already operates, operate such shelters in other communities to understand their recommendations and best practices. We think that there's, as I said, that the sort of, the research and the findings around placing people in hotels and motels as a form of temporary shelter with supportive case management services is, is showing some good results. And I think there's more that is gonna be learned broadly, and there's more that we can learn as a community if we pursue that. So it, it would be premature. I think the bottom line is we think we need to keep moving forward on the understanding that a permanent overnight low barrier shelter is needed. And at the same time, we should be looking at what else we're learning as a community and, and as the, the world is changing in terms of health and safety protocol and, and learn from that, but that we shouldn't, we should not press the pause button on this. And I, I think the Lewiston's position for as long as I've paid attention to this issue has been kind of a recognition of the need and kind of waiting for someone to come forward that could propose to develop and, and manage this. And we definitely need someone with, with expertise to partner with. But kind of going back to the first recommendation here, we think that it's important that, that the city, city leaders play a, a more active role in, in discussing and strategizing and trying to understand what role Lewiston can play and what resources there are. And this should be on the table as a part of those conversations. Any questions before the last recommendation? Okay. So our last recommendation is with regards to mitigating evictions. Obviously, and I don't know if it's obvious, but in, in most cases, the eviction happens, and then someone becomes unhoused. So there's a lot more that goes into it, but, but evictions are, are a part of creating the circumstance of homelessness. We think that Lewiston's local emergency housing assistance program is, is good. Lewiston took an important step in simplifying it. It was pretty, it was a pretty high, I would characterize as a high-barrier application process for an emergency program when it was first rolled out. But the city improved upon it. The state has had a, a, a very good program in terms of ease of application. And, and all of these things are helping not just keep people housed, but also keeping some income going to property owners to continue operating their properties. So we think that should be continued really at, at every level, but at the very least, since we're talking about the local level, should continue at the local level. We think Lewiston should be advocating for state and federal programs that provide both emergency and long-term rental assistance to eligible renters for the same reason, again, both keeping people in stable housing and also providing the, the revenue necessary to operate buildings safely. And in addition to that, we think there should be advocacy for relief to small landlords who have incurred unsustainable losses during this crisis and who, you know, the private sector provides most of the housing right now. And so we need to make sure that they continue to provide that housing. That is the summary of the recommendations, and I welcome questions, comments, discussion on, on all of it. And I'll just say thank you again for, for tasking us with this, for listening to the presentation tonight, for taking it seriously. And I look forward to your thoughts. And I will stop my screen share.
Thank you. All right, that was a good presentation. I appreciated the packet information that was sent. Let me ask you this, Craig. Has, has the Housing Committee looked at potential funding sources for any of your recommendations to the council?
As I said, we know that there are, there's CDBG money, there's CARES Act money, and that main housing also has resources for this. And those, those, all three of those are important places to, to start looking. We have not gotten any more specific in terms of you know, ma- making requests or beginning conversations there. I, I think that would be, my, my opinion is that would be staff's role. But that, that's as far as we've gotten with that.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jelineas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sattlemeyer, and your recommendations. I just had a couple quick questions. Am I right in assuming that any kind of temporary housing solutions that have been done at local hotels and motels have been done absent any formalized agreement with the city?
That, that's a question for anyone, or is that a question for me specifically?
Anybody, actually. I just, I, I just am aware that there's some housing stuff that's going on at certain motels. And I, when you make this recommendation, I just wanna be sure that it's something separate than what I'm envisioning in my head.
I think, so Dennis probably can respond to that.
Why don't I start? And Craig, if you wanna, if there's something I missed, or you can edit. There's a couple of scenarios that you're probably referring to, Councilor Jelineas. One, the state does have a contract with a local hotel as a wellness shelter for, for those, you know, in that situation due to COVID. So that's a state contract. We also have an arrangement through our social services department with a local hotel to house folks on a temporary emergency basis, kind of like what Mr. Sattlemeyer is suggesting here. But I think it would be different, I think, what, what the Housing Committee is bringing forward here would be outside of that. Craig, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the current situation Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the current situation, this is, this seems to be, I think, looking at either expanding on maybe what we do through social services, but a potentially, I think, more geared at the homelessness need that they, that they're bringing forward here. So I think it's a little different, but we do have those current setups now.
Thank you for that. And then if I might, just real briefly, I just, you know, I sit on the Lewiston Auburn Public Health Committee. We have been talking about the need for public bathrooms. And, you know, so I guess I wondered, you know, have we looked at, I mean, clearly, you know, there, there's monies, like you said, funds for us to look at or something like that. But have we looked at other models, like, say, in other cities like Portland or Bangor? Mr. Sattlemeyer, where, where we can see like maybe where they've been successful in doing anything like this? Has the committee done any of that?
Have we looked at models that have been successful, sorry, as far as bathrooms go, or?
Bathrooms or, or public showers, like you were referencing earlier?
I, I know that other committee members are, are more familiar with that than, than I am directly. So I, I can't share much more detail about other examples of success from, from my own research. And I can, I can get back to you on that. But, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you so much.
But I will just remind, I think staff's doing a little bit of work because of, you know, because they're working with the Health Committee, so on public bathrooms anyway. And you, you, you brought up models from other cities. And when it comes to shelters, I mean, I think, you know, that's another area, because I think Bangor has a much different approach to shelter and homeless than, than let's say Portland does. And clearly different than what Lewiston does, because we really rely strictly on our nonprofits or church-based organizations at this point and have for years. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Craig, for, for representing the Housing Committee on, on here. And I think these are all things, you know, we've heard over the years, or at least I have in, in three years sitting on this council. And, and I'm glad to be supportive of many, if not all, of the initiatives put forward by the Housing Committee. I do, I, I feel it would, it is my duty to also just report back, you know, the Wellness Center Shelter, there we go. It was a big success in terms of moving some folks into into case management and then into permanent housing. But I would be remiss if I did not mention the fact that many constituents living in the area saw or perceived an increase in some non-community behaviors, I guess I would say. And so we, we do have to seriously consider that. And also the, the presence of a police detail at that location at the armory for the duration was also an added piece of that pie. And so I just want to make sure we're, we're telling the whole story when we tell that story. You know, I, I'm super supportive of how it went and, and the care taken by the staff and, and city management on that front. But there were definitely, many of my neighbors very upset with that process. And, and it's hard to pull off. So credit to those who did it. But just want to make sure I raise that in this conversation as well.
If I can respond, thank you for, for sharing that. And of course, you're representing, you're representing your constituents. And just to be clear, we haven't recommended that, that the armory be used for, for the purpose that we're describing here. I think it's important to, for, for our elected officials and anyone listening to remember that people, you know, this is a serious problem. It's a real problem. And it's, it's happening whether we live close to it or not. I have, over this summer, there was an unhoused person living in the woods behind my home. And their, their encampment unfortunately caught fire. And the, the fire was extremely close to, you know, close to my neighbors, about 20 feet away from a, a woman who is in her eighties taking care of her husband. She's lived in that home for at least 40 years or more, and her home is very close to mine. And, and luckily, we, we saw the fire. I mean, it was like, you know, flames rising higher, higher than the house itself. We were able to call the fire department and have it put out. As far as I could tell, it looked like a, a toaster and a mattress had somehow caught fire. So the reason I share this story is because that, that is how, you know, someone is trying to meet their need, their lack of housing need in the absence of community solutions. And it's something, I mean, I believe it's important, I, you know, from a community health perspective, from an ethical perspective, I think we need to address this together. From a, from a personal perspective, I could see how, you know, that circumstance could have threatened the, the direct safety of my neighbor and potentially my own home. And I, I'd like everyone to take the issue, you know, as seriously as if, you know, that, that could happen next to their own home. And I don't believe, at, at no point did I feel that the solution was simply to kick that person out or, or move them along so that they can struggle next to someone else's home. You know, they're meeting that need with the resources that they have. I think this speaks to why we need to work with the state, why we need to work as a community to, to address it. But, you know, poverty is, is hard. The symptoms are scary. And pushing it away doesn't solve it, solve it. It usually makes it worse. And, you know, it can, it can cause some discomfort to see up close, but it's, you know, it's, it's important that we are considering, especially as, as, as leaders in the community who are actually thinking at a policy level. We need to be thinking about how, how we address this and not just sort of make policy based upon our reactions to, to things that we don't like to see. And I, and I know, Counselor Ray, that you're very thoughtful and you're, you weren't suggesting that we should just, you know, hide these things where no one can see them. But I'm, I'm just using this as an opportunity to, to address that, because I think it's important for people to hear.
I appreciate that. And I, I think the Rec Department would have a lot to say about the armory being considered for a permanent use in the future. So I totally understand where you're coming from on that and where the Housing Committee lands on all of that. I think you know, the, as Mayor Carey was just referencing, how other communities kind of tackle some of this, I, I reflect on, you know, Portland's decision-making community process around where to locate one of their shelters and, and just the community conversation around that too. So I, I just was knowing that that's going to be a part of the conversation if a permanent shelter idea were to move forward, especially in terms of location and just coming up with the, with the best way for, to equip us and the city to speak about that, which I think you just laid down some, some really thoughtful phrasing for that, too.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, that was a great presentation. I am the council representative on the Housing Committee. So I was on part of these conversations. I, I'm, I'm very supportive of all the recommendations and initiatives put forward by us and by the Housing Committee. I really want to emphasize that the city of Lewiston really needs to take an active role in housing our most vulnerable community members, especially since winter is approaching. We need to find a solution, whether that's temporary, whatever it is. We have a lot of vacant buildings and properties that is unused. And we need to find a solution sooner than later, especially since the winter nights are coming for our community members. The other thing I wanted to say is that it's all about money and we need our state legislators and our federal elected officials to really advocate for funding and of course support us. It's all hands on deck. And we can't, even though we want to be actively engaged in this, we can't take it all. So we need to somehow bring the conversation to our state and federal representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors have questions or comments? I think, you know, this is a, a real challenging issue that even on my, you know, the decade that I've been around in local politics, homelessness has been talked about. I think this year I've heard more about homelessness and, and different discussions coming from different organizations, more than I ever have in, in the time that I've served. With it, though, brings a lot of challenges to our community, because if you think a CMP project and folks saying not in my backyard has been heard, we will hear that significantly when we talk about placing a homeless shelter. And I've had many discussions with the city administrator, the deputy city administrator since January, because I, I think truly we've talked about homelessness, the three of us, if not weekly, every couple of weeks. And we've worked closely with the community concepts to develop a wellness shelter, shelter during the pandemic. And we are engaging on a regional level, not, not to the level that I think you'd like to see, Craig. But we are starting that process. Because this, and I think, you know, Dennis might want to chime in, might not, but you know, if, if I don't cover something, please, please help me cover it. But that regional discussion is happening, but more importantly, our regional partners need to identify that they're part of this, this, this issue. It's not solely a Lewiston issue. Funding will be an issue as well. But I think one way or the other, our community is going to have to deal with homelessness. I'm not sure what the solutions will be yet. I think Bangor has a, has a, a model that, that we should at least look into for our community. Because I think it provides funding through social services on a nightly basis. And as, you know, we get a good portion of that money back. So it wouldn't fall totally on the backs of the local property taxpayers. Dennis, anything? Anything you want to add?
No, I, I will just say, I think you covered it well, Mayor. But I certainly want to thank the, the Housing Committee for their work. Great presentation, Craig. Across the board, I think there's a lot of good recommendations in here for us to, to build off of and continue to, to work on. I echo the mayor's sentiment. I think we have been, lots of conversations, lots of work, I think, a little bit, you know, leading up to this. But certainly the Housing Committee's put some good work in here. And I think we just got to build on that. I think the biggest thing that, and maybe there's, you know, through some conversation, this has become a little bit clearer. I know this conversation is at the state level. I commend the Housing Committee for, for identifying this as a regional issue. And it really is. And I think it's identifying what is that region? What are those, what, what exactly, what region are we a part of? And then that helps us shape of who are those regional partners we need at the table for these conversations? Because we can't, we're not going to fix this alone. But we have a real problem. We get that. There's a real issue we need to address. But it's rather making sure we got the right people at the table with us to address it so we can do this the right way. And I think regionally is the right way. And defining that and then defining who the right partners at the table should give us some, some, some right step in the right direction. So again, thank you for the work. And I'm excited to continue the conversation with you, Craig.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one last question. I'm not remembering at this point, is the Housing Committee a standing committee or ad hoc?
I believe we are a standing committee.
Standing committee.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
And we, our next meeting is tomorrow, actually. We, we meet monthly. But we, we've been doing some extra meetings this month just to prepare for this. And we meet tomorrow if there are things that you know, council wants us to dig into more or wants the Housing Committee to respond to, we prefer to, you know, have that by our meeting tomorrow so that we have time to discuss it and, and turn around a response for you. At least one that's timely with relation to some of the, the more urgent components of these recommendations. But again, thank you for taking the time to, to listen to, to take it seriously. And we look forward to continuing working with you on this. And I will add one, one item that I think is of interest to the committee. In, in either case, to look more at is how, how general assistance intersects with, with this issue and housing in general and what opportunities there might be to improve how that works locally.
Okay, thank you very much, Craig. Thank you, Heidi, and to the rest of the committee as well.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, thanks. And we'll, we'll be booting you out here in a second. All right, whenever you're ready, if we can bring in the participants for item number two, body worn cameras. Good evening, Chief. If you could introduce who you have here with us this evening and then take it away.
Sure. We have John Watson. He's a representative from BodyWorn. And that's the vendor that, the committee that I put together selected for the body camera that I have Sergeant Conley. She sat on this as well. This came from the July 7th resolve from the City Council. So I put together a committee made up of a representative of the Patrolman's Union, myself, Sergeant Conley. We also had our fleet manager. He's the one that deals with the repairs of the the cameras that we currently have in the cruisers. We met with three different companies, Axon, which has been known for tasers, where they make body cameras, watch guard body cameras, and they currently supply our cruiser cameras and then body worn. The recommendation from the group I put together, including the unions, was to have body worn. We like the fact that they have, and John can go into explain to it, but what they have is called triggers. They have multiple triggers, meaning the camera goes on for a very different reason. So you, you avoid that issue of an incident not being recorded. And I don't want to steal everything that John's going to talk about. But, you know, you can program it to start recording 50 yards or 100 yards before the officers even respond to a location when they get dispatched to it. So I'm going to have John kind of jump in here and give his overview of, of body worn and why we liked it as much as we did. So John, can you take that away?
I'm here, Chief, thank you. Well, thanks for having me. Hi, guys. So just a touch about me, my name, like a chief's already said, my name's John Watson. I'm a retired police officer myself. I retired from the West Lafayette Police Department in Indiana. A little point of reference, Purdue University is set in the middle of my city. So just after over 20 years of service in my community, I retired. I've now been with BodyWorn by Utility for just over two years now. I actually bought this system. I ran this system at my police department for two years until I retired. But we do things quite a bit differently than what most other camera vendors are doing. I think you're going to like what you see here. And I think, I think it'll quickly highlight why the chief and his command staff and team there has selected us. So there's, there's a lot of problems with every other camera vendor on the market. And the number one issue that every other camera vendor on the market has is they're dependent on the officers turning them on. Every other camera vendor in the world is asking those officers to push that button to turn their camera on. At BodyWorn, we perfected automation. We removed that humanitarian element of officers failing or forgetting to turn their camera on. I'll get into that more here in just a minute. But then cameras getting knocked off. Every other camera vendor in the world is mounting their body cameras on the outside of their uniform, which frequently get knocked off. And when body cameras are laying on the ground, recording the streets, the streetlights to the ground, they're not on your officer's chest and not recording what is actually happening. And then video availability, every other vendor in the world is storing that body camera video on the device. Whereas our videos are never really, never truly stored on the device. whereas our videos are never really, never truly stored on the device. Our videos are actually streamed to the cloud, real time, as they're being recorded. So our business model is a little bit different than what most other camera vendors do. We actually operate on a SaaS business model. What that means is software as a service. So we are not selling the police department, the city, the hardware of a camera system. We're selling the service of capturing video. So what that means for you guys, your system is always supported, it is always maintained throughout the life of the agreement. If anything ever breaks, we replace it for free. Because we're not selling hardware, we're selling the service of capturing video. So, you know, the buzzwords in body cameras are accountability and transparency, right? Well, with our automation, with our triggering, have we've removed that human error element of failed activations. The question is, is how much more accountable and how much more transparent can you be to your community than with a fully automated system? Where we've removed that human error element. We are also the only vendor in the world that is endorsed by the NAACP in large part because of our automation, because we ensure recordings. And the first piece of this triggering automation I'll talk about is simply called holster activation. If one of your police officers draws their gun, it's going to automatically turn their body camera on for them. Plus it's going to back up and pre-record audio and video for a full two minutes. So, you know, police work evolves and happens so quickly. The last thing our, our officers are thinking about doing is pushing up silly button to turn their camera on. And as, as fast evolving as situations are on the street, if one of your officers in a situation where they just simply have to draw their sidearm, the last thing they are thinking about doing is turning their body camera on. So this triggering automation, as soon as your officer draws their sidearm, it's going to turn their body camera on, plus that pre-record all the way back for two minutes. So it leads up to recording what actually transpired that led up to the point that your officer had to draw their gun. And our system also has a robust officer safety feature built into it, called Officer Down. If one of your police officers ever goes down the line of duty, our system says an instant alert to the dispatch center, an instant alert to every officer's in-car video system, and an instant alert to every officer's body camera with turn-by-turn directions on how to get from point A to point B to come help save that officer's life. Literally just a few months ago, we saved a sheriff's deputy's life. There was a sheriff's deputy that was in a foot pursuit, he had a heart attack and went down the line of duty. Our system alerted all the other fellow deputies working in the dispatch center and the deputies were able to get there and help save his life. And that deputy is alive today solely because of our system. And then live streaming, you can live stream, you can remote view any officer's body camera, any officer's in-car video system, from anywhere in the world, you have internet connectivity, from anywhere in the world. You know, real practical application, you know, my, my agency that I retired from, you know, we were having protests, turned to riots, a lot of civil unrest ourselves. The command staff was live streaming it, seeing it real time, having a real-time actual intelligence, knowing exactly what was really going on, and they could help call those shots and make the decisions as the command staff in the command post. Another real, real practical application. You know, you can live stream, if you put our cameras on, on your SWAT officers, when your SWAT team is getting ready to go breach a door to go in, the chief can have real-time practical intelligence, knowing exactly what's going on, on that crime scene, on that, as those, your officers are making entry into that house. Vehicle pursuit going through town, your officers, your command staff could live stream it, see for themselves exactly what's going on in that vehicle pursuit. And then no docking stations. Every other vendor in the world is asking your officers to store that body camera video on the device, storing that video on the device, waiting for them to come back to headquarters and waiting for them to put that body camera in a dock. And then it takes hours for that video to offload, it takes hours. Well, you know, I already mentioned body cameras on the outside of the uniform. I actually still have two of my last generation body cameras we've lost, they fell off my officer's chest, we've never found them. Because every other vendor is storing that video on the device, you lose cameras, cameras get destroyed, you've now lost all of your evidence. Whereas our videos are sent to the cloud, real time, as they're being recorded, because they're never truly stored on the device. Then CAT integration and CAT activation. A lot of vendors can do that first word called integrate, but we are the only vendor in the world that can activate a camera. We're the only one in the world that can remote start a camera system. What this means is we've removed that, that human error element, to where your officers just have to show up and do their job. Because as they start to arrive on the scene through automation, through triggering, our system's going to start their body cameras and their in-car cameras for them. So the officers don't have to remember to push a silly button to turn their body camera on. Because what we specialize in is this thing called policy-based recording, policy-based recording. We'll work with the chief and his officers on determining what is your depart, what is your police department's policy on when do you want cameras started? And through automation, through triggering, we follow those department policies and we're starting cameras for the officers. We're starting cameras for your officers about 90 to 95% of the time, removing that human error element of your officers forgetting or failing to turn their camera system on. Then foot pursuit activation, your officer just takes off in a foot chase, the body camera is going to automatically start recording. And our cameras have GPS built inside of them. So, you know, we've had GPS on our police cars for decades, right? But now we have GPS on our real resource, you know where your people are at. And then uniform integration. You know, the traditional body camera is a plastic box hanging on the outside of the uniform that gets knocked off, rather than staying on the officer's chest, actually recording what happened. The picture on your right, you can see our body cameras are contained inside the uniform. It's a nice, clean, sleek, professional look. We don't have some hunky plastic box hanging on the outside of our uniform that will get knocked off. And we just don't take up much real estate on your uniforms. The only thing we need on your uniforms is a space about the size of a quarter. But, you know, we're not in the weeds of the uniforms, we're not in the uniform business per se. So our system literally works in any uniform, any garments you, you come up with. So we're not asking your police officers, your police department to change uniforms. The system will work in the same uniforms your officers are currently wearing now and maintaining that nice, clean, sleek, professional look. And then real-time communications, our system operates as a secondary communications piece, where you can blast out boa alerts and mugshots to your officers, providing a critical intelligence. So the way we're able to do all of this, our, our body camera is actually a computer base, because every other vendor is creating a plastic box and trying to make it do this, this, and this for police work, and it just doesn't work. The way we have all this triggering, all this automation, the, the reason we're the most technologically advanced camera vendor in the world is because we harness the power of computers. And our, our body camera is a computer-based, constantly running on data, program, algorithm. So that's how we're doing what we're doing, what nobody else can do, because we started with that computer base. And like I, like I had mentioned, if anything ever breaks, we replace it for free. Because we're selling the service of capturing video, we're not selling the hardware of a body camera system. So that keeps your police department from getting in that same vicious circle like I was called in, where every so many years you're going back to city council asking for more money to go buy more cameras, because they're broken or outdated. And AvailWeb, AvailWeb is our backend, it's video management, but AvailWeb is so much more than video management. AvailWeb actually ends up becoming a critical incident management tool, a situational awareness tool. For example, you know, Auburn Police Department is already on our system as well. So through, through, all we need is signed demo used between the chiefs. Our system becomes a critical incident management, where if you have a, a serious incident going on in town, you actually pull in and we can port the GPS of the, of the Auburn officers and the Auburn vehicles into our system. And you use that, you can remote start cameras with geo fences and action zones, and just having that critical, critical awareness, knowing where your people are at while you're managing that, that mass incident. And AvailWeb also becomes, it's a, it integrates into your prosecutors and your courts. So it's for interoperability and evidence and, and evidence sharing over your prosecutor's office. And as I'd already mentioned, Auburn is already on our system as well. They're on, they're running just our in-car video systems right now, and they're working to deploy body cameras as well. But there's a huge aspect of this mutual aid piece, like I'd mentioned, with critical incident management and the GPS in our in-car video system as well as the GPS on the officers. That is a very, very fast kind of overview of what we're doing. You know, one of these typical demonstrations, you know, when I went with the chief and his command staff, usually lasts about an hour and a half to two hours. And trying to be really respectful of your guys' time and shorten us down to the nuts and bolts of it, and be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. If you could just drop the shared screen.
John, could you talk about the storage in the cloud and address that?
Yes, sir. So our system is true 100% unlimited cloud storage. The cloud we use is the Amazon Gov, CGIS compliant cloud, so it's the AWS cloud, and CGIS compliant, which meets FBI standards. It's 100% true unlimited storage, unlimited users, unlimited redaction. We don't play the licensing fee game or the yearly maintenance fee game. It's a, we provide a, a all-inclusive term key operation.
And John, I believe you told us, if we do sign this five-year contract, your, your company replaces all the cameras, all the body cameras after, was it 37 months?
Yes, sir. So we're going to come in on the 37th month and we're giving you all brand-new body cameras where you need them or not, as well as throughout the life agreement, you know, anything ever breaks, we replace it for free.
The, have you had, has your company had any issues with, you know, the lack of, you know, you lose web access for a few seconds? Is, so is there any failure rates on this being downloaded?
No, our, every one of our contracts, it actually spells out a 99% uptime.
Okay, and then failure rates on the activation, the self-activation or the camera itself, any issues there?
We just, we just don't, we just don't have a lot of issues with it. For example, so, I mean, I mean, we have a huge footprint across the country, we're actually number two in the industry in body cameras. We have over 100,000 devices out there now, over 100,000 devices out there. We support those devices 24/7, 365. How many tech support people do you think it would require to support 100,000 of, over 100,000, 24/7, 365? Our tech support is staffed by six people. The way we're able to do that, the system just works.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have three questions and then a comment. So the first is, I noticed we were given kind of a, a listing of other companies and what they provide and some pricing options. Does this also have to go through the finance committee? I don't know who would answer that, though.
So, yeah, I mean, I believe we would have to do a formal process and bid, and then it would ultimately go through the finance committee through the normal process. This, this is just, you know, the process that we, we did to vet the, the vendors at this point, bring them forward to you with a recommendation, but we still would do go through the formal process.
Okay, um, the second question, possibly to the police chief. So due to the cloud management kind of factor for this system, would additional staff be needed to help, I don't know, to help officers upload their information to the DA's office or that sort of thing? I just remember back to doing some ride-alongs and officers commenting that the, the dash cams are great, but they then have to get that evidence to the prosecutors, things like that. So I just wanted to clarify there.
John can probably explain it better, but what happens, Counselor Ray, is it's automatically uploaded. And what the officers were talking to you about was they used to have to upload it to a desktop computer and then upload it again to the share file system that the DA's office would access. And I believe this system just basically sends them a link that it can access, but maybe John can explain that a little bit better than I can.
Yeah, we set, we set the system up in the background where the vast majority of the videos that's going to end up needing to go to the prosecutor is automatically sent over through automation. But that, that's actually a very common question I get about, I'm going to have to hire more staff. Just a little bit of a perspective, so Indianapolis Metro Police Department, you know, that's an 1,800-man agency. They hired two additional people and they could have just done it with one. St. Louis County Police Department, as well as St. Louis Metro Police Department, they each hired two. And again, I believe that was a little bit of an overkill, but that's what they chose to do. So a city your size could easily be managed with somebody already in-house.
Okay.
Based on his presentation, Counselor Ray, we felt with the fleet manager that we had, and we would be able to handle that without any additional staff.
Okay, that sounds spot on to me as well. And then my third question was for Chief O'Malley. So as John was talking about kind of the policy for initiating when cameras come on, would that be something that citizens and/or counselors could participate in the development of that policy?
I don't see why not, we're in the middle of, you know, reviewing policies from other agencies here in Maine. I think it was, maybe Sergeant Conley can jump in there, but we got, I think it was from South Paul and a couple of other locations. So we're working with the unions right now on going over that.
Yeah, we looked at South Portland and then another agency, with us being clear accredited, we obviously want to follow those guidelines as well. So we're, we're working with agencies that are also accredited.
Okay.
And Counselor Ray, what's good about this is with our current system, we have a server and we can only store so much for so long, and then things have to be deleted to make room for the, you know, the videos that are recorded. And this gives us an option of having more storage, as John said, it's unlimited storage. So we don't have to really have that while we get rid of something after 30 days, 60 to 90 days. It gives us a lot more leeway in how much stuff we can store.
Yeah, that's great to hear. And then just my, my general comment is, you know, this, I'm always looking for increased transparency and safety for everyone. And, you know, body cams in general seem to move us closer to that, and so, and this product seems to satisfy all of that. What you just alluded to, Chief O'Malley, about being able to access this information later on, you know, I recently heard from the sheriff that there is someone who's been awaiting trial for over two years at the jail in pre-trial. And so being able to, to know that that resource could be retroactively found instead of, you know, just going back in a prosecutor's email or something, this, this is far more assurance for the actual processes of our justice system to work. So this, this was great, thank you for all this info.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had similar questions about accessing that information, how easy it would be for, you know, police staff to do that. And you more than answered it, and I'm, I'm pretty happy with the answer. I guess the only concern I have would be, you know, the cameras and, I mean, the comfortability and fitting with the vest and everything. But if the officers and unions are okay with it, then, you know, they're the experts on that, so I'd, I'd be okay with that. In that case, I really don't have any questions, I was very impressed by the presentation. I'm glad we're moving forward with this. So, thank you, Mr. Watson, thank you, Chief O'Malley and Sergeant Conley.
Sergeant Conley, if you could just, you know, kind of refer into Counselor Johnson's question, what are officers saying? What, I mean, you work the streets still pretty regularly, what are your thoughts on this camera system?
You know, based on both unions have looked at it, and it's been very, very positive feedback. Like John mentioned, this is, I believe, the only camera system where it's actually affixed inside the uniform. And one of the things, I don't know, John didn't touch on it too much, but what they do is they will come in and work with what we have for current uniforms. And Body worn, you can probably speak to this a little more, John, but it doesn't require you to get new uniforms. They come in and make sure that it works with your uniform. And just the fact of not having something affixed to the outside that can get knocked off in a foot chase or something along, or, you know, something along those lines, officers love the fact that it's just inserted into a, I'm not sure if you guys have the packet that we gave you, but it's almost like a plastic piece inside of the uniform. And it's basically like, it looks like a cell phone and it snaps inside of that, so it's very well protected. The only thing you see on the uniform is basically the camera. So that's been, like I said, a lot of positive feedback from the officers on that end.
Thank you. Anything you want to add, John, on the, the uniform thing? Do you guys come in and actually do the tailoring of the uniform?
Yeah, so there's actually a couple of aspects to that. So every one of our agreements, so we're going to issue new uniforms to your, to your police officers as well, it's built into the pricing. You know, whatever your officers are using now, or if it's a time in your, your agency's history where they want to transition to a new style of uniform, we can help you out with buying those. As well as we come in, we retrofit the existing uniforms your officers have. So the uniforms your guys just bought with their last clothing allowance is still serviceable equipment. It doesn't just become unused equipment hanging in a closet.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jolinas?
I'd say thank you for the presentation, Mr. Watson, this was good information, and thank you, Chief O'Malley. I, I am, I can understand why the union president, you know, described this equipment seeming to be, you know, light years ahead of your competitors, this is pretty impressive for sure. But I got hung up a little bit on the, the activation, and I, I think maybe I'm just misunderstanding. So I think what I heard you say is if an officer draw, goes to the holster and draws their weapon, draws their, goes to draw, it automatically activates the camera. And I understood about the, the alerts. And I understood about the, the alerts and the live stream thing that you were saying, but let's say they didn't go to their holster. Let's just say, like, then it's up to them to activate the camera at that point?
So, so that's where uh, all this is kind of fail-safe. So we're live reading your CAD data, your CAD data is the data that the uh, that the police department is dispatching their officers to?
John, can I interrupt for one second? I don't think, some people may not understand that. So CAD is computer automated dispatch. So when the officer gets dispatched or sent to an address, that GPS location is then fed into the system. And so we can program and say, okay, when you show up 50 yards or 100 yards before those GPS coordinates, coordinates, which would be an address, it will activate the camera. So the officer, even before they get out of the car, that camera will be on, then when they step out, if something happens, it's already automatically running before they go to a call.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I misunderstood that they had to, what was activating it was the actual release or withdrawal of the
No, that's just one of, one of the triggers. So I'm saying an officer does draw his weapon, it automatically goes on, say they weren't dispatched to a call. If the officer is in a prone position, that will activate it. So it will turn on on its own. It has many different triggers that we can program this um, system to do.
All right, my apologies. Thank you.
CAD, CAD is the, the cop talk for being dispatched to a call.
Thank you. Okay.
I think I did, I think I just found my next sales guy.
And to clarify, chief, and then you can set up different triggers to set it off by policy. So if you decide as an administrator, you want the camera to always turn on involving XX, you can create a policy and they'll, they'll program that camera to do that?
Yes, whatever we tell John, his people to program, they'll program. But I think the, what I really liked was the GPS coordinates where it's activated, whatever the call is, any call, you know, a cat up in a tree, whatever it is, it's gonna be activated and we can have it 50 yards, 100 yards, you know, we can have a distance programmed in that it'll turn on. Cause it's reading the offices all the time and the, and the video automatically goes up to the cloud. So it's not like, what normally would have to happen is you'd come back to the station, take it off your chest, put it in a a docking or a charging station so it can upload all the video and then you have to then download it again to read it. So if, if something major happened, like John said, we could maybe have to wait two hours to see what happened. Um, so this is instantaneous. And what I also like, he kind of said with BOLOs on, that means be on the lookout. Um, so say somebody goes to the Big Apple or a convenience store gets um, robbed, an officer will take the body camera out, which looks just like this, and take a picture of the video of the security camera, then they can send it to everybody. So every officer working in Lewiston and Auburn can see what the person looks like and know, oh, I know that person, I'll be on the lookout for them. Another thing, if they go to a scene and they want to take pictures of evidence, they take this out, this acts as a camera. They take a picture of a bullet casing or a piece of evidence, it automatically gets uploaded to the cloud. It has date and time and gives you the location where that occurred, so that's a good way of documenting the evidence. And the detectives would have that as well, too. So that's another feature that these body cameras that we have, that's, that's not, that they don't offer anything like that.
Right, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, did you say this, this um, body camera doesn't have audio? Or it does?
No, ma'am, it does have audio, audio and video.
I have a question. What about during, instead of um, dispatch, what about traffic stop? Would it automatically record?
Yes, ma'am. So it's all tied into the in-car and uh, it can automatically turn on based off what the chief wants and how he wants those recordings started. Uh, the body camera can turn on immediately when the light bar is turned on or wait and it doesn't turn on to the officer opens their car door. It's all configurable, the agency's needs.
Okay, awesome. Um, chief, when that, when you're doing the policy or those discussions, I would definitely be interested to be um, included or involved.
Well, we'll try, we'll put something together and I can give it to Dennis, um, and then we can have you folks take a look at. But I want to try to get something together before I just, you know, we just start, we don't, there's no need to start from scratch because there's so many places that already have that that we can look at.
Um, last question is, I was, as I was reading, um, I saw that the cruisers, the cameras on the cruisers are gonna um, be replaced soon. I'm wondering, um, what is the process or the option to also get this company and doing our um, police like cruisers for the cameras?
If we don't go with this company, the ones we have are failing from watch God and need to be replaced, they're getting so old. So what I've submitted to um, in this presentation is to replace 15 cruiser cameras and the 80 body cameras. Um, and I gave you the price, I think it was just under $114,000 a year. Um, body worn is requiring a five-year contract. Now, the bad news is, which we just learned, is the price that I've quoted you is only good until, and John, you can maybe jump in here, was it middle of November?
Your, your current quote is good through November 10th.
November 10th. So if we're gonna do something with this now, that price is good until November 10th. And then I'm gonna say the price is probably gonna go up after that. I'm not sure how much, um, John? You know how much it's gonna go up after November 10th if we go with the same proposal?
Um, it's roughly, I'm trying to remember the numbers off the top of my head.
Sergeant Conley, perhaps you know?
I believe, um, what the quote you gave me was, was going up to 668,000. Does that sound accurate? As opposed to 596,000, roughly?
I was thinking about 70,000 higher.
So that
At five years, over five years.
So the price will go up a little bit per year, but there is, this company does a lot more than other companies can't that we, we went through.
And to lock that price in, what do you need? Just a commitment or do you need some cash?
Sign contract.
All right, thank you.
Uh, that's where the finance director gets involved, I think, ma'am.
Right, I just, you know, we have a pro- budgeting process that we have to go through. We can't just, you know, on a whim. So I don't know if your, your company would consider locking that price in once we commit to it, but but the actual uh, engagement in the contract would be, you know, at a later date. But that's something I think you can talk with the chief about and he, he can talk with our city administrator. Uh, and some negotiation power here on our city administrator, hopefully. We'll bless you with that. All right, uh, Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one question for Mr. Watson or Captain Watson first. And that has to do with security of the system. Whether or not hackers are gonna be able to get at this, I mean, we're talking potential evidentiary issues, uh, somebody getting in destroying that thing. I'm sure that with everything that I've seen so far, that you've taken that into consideration. I'm wondering if you could address that. Then I have a couple of comments beyond that.
Yes, sir. So um, our cloud, the cloud we're using is the Amazon Gov, C G S compliant cloud. So it's the Amazon AWS cloud. And the C G S compliant, which means it meets all FBI standards. This is the same cloud that everything in Washington DC is stored in. It's not been compromised. Um, it's on a redundancy factor of 12. So every one video that you guys record, there's 11 more copies of that. Um, so it's a factor of 12 on redundancy. You, you do not get any more secure than the Amazon cloud.
Okay, uh, up until just a few minutes ago, you had me convinced that this is the way to go. The idea of the price increase, uh, knowing that our process is pretty well set in stone, I'm also on the finance committee, that, that bothers me a little bit that uh, we're being pressured to, to go into something that we really can't do at this point in time. Other than that, of the council members, let me broaden that, of the council and mayor, there's only one other person on this group that has the experience that I have in this field. And I think that you've got what appears to be a tremendous product. I think it's above and beyond what we started looking at. I would be all uh, in favor of going for it, but like I say, this, this idea of we gotta commit by November 10th, that really kind of turns me off and I'm probably one of the biggest proponents of going this way of anybody in the group. So that may be an issue as we move forward, but the idea I think is solid. Uh, I think you've addressed a number of concerns that I see. I've been involved with the specking uniforms, replacing uniforms, replacing equipment. Uh, you know, the first thing you get lost is the whistle, the hat, the nameplate. And the guy that can come up with something for a hat that uh, doesn't get lost, uh, cause that was back in the days when we had to wear hats, but that has changed a little bit over the years. Um, I see the chief smiling at that, so that's probably one of the reasons is we spent so much money every year replacing hats, I don't know. But I, I think you've got a good product. Uh, if what you say is 100%, then I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go that way. My only concern is right now that it's going to be beyond November 10th, I think, before we can commit. Unless you can come back and and work with the, the chief and city administrator to assure us, I mean, the, that there's not gonna be any type of a, a fiscal penalty for this. We uh, got dragged into this in a process that I wasn't in favor of. Uh, I'm all in favor of the cameras, I'm all in favor of supporting the police department and uh, I'd like to move ahead with this, but we've got to have some assurances, I think. And thank you very much for your time.
Under, could, can I readdress that? Can I readdress that for a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I completely understand what you're telling me, Mr. Clement. Um, to back, to first off, let me say, nobody's trying to strong-arm you guys into signing this contract by November the 10th. That pricing was delivered to the police department back on August the 12th. Um, effective the first week of October, that's when our price change effect came into effect. So, um, you know, this quote's on a standard 90-day um, uh, tenure. And you know, we're coming to the close of that. I'm not telling you that uh, you're, you're gonna get forced to the new pricing model. Um, that's certainly above my pay grade and that's something I have to uh, work with the police department and work with my bosses on it to come to an agreement on what we're gonna do here. Uh, but no, I'm not trying to put you guys into the spotlight and say this has to be done before November the 10th. Or we're gonna, you know, um, charge that additional amount. That's just simply, the quote was drafted and delivered on August the 12th and it expires on November the 10th.
Okay, thank you for that response. Any other uh, questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly to address Mr. Watson, I mean, the first we heard of this was tonight. We've had this material for a week or 10 days, uh, but there was no mention of it in there, so it kind of came as a, as a surprise to me to hear this tonight. And uh, that really caused me to rethink a couple of things. Not to say that I wouldn't be in favor of it, uh, based on that, but if there is an increase, it all depends on the amount, uh, there's a whole, whole bunch of factors that go into it. We have just come off a very tumultuous budget year here. We were looking at almost, what, $3, I believe it was, tax increase when we started. Uh, COVID hit us, we ended up with a 40 cent decrease in our tax rate. And that was through some very creative finagling of a whole bunch of stuff. Uh, so I don't envision the next couple of years being truly great budget years, but then again, having been in municipal and county government for over 45 years, I don't recall ever experiencing a good budget year. It was always, this is not gonna be a good year, but some years were just not as good as others, so. Anyway, uh, that's, that's my feeling on it. It came as a surprise and it kind of shocked me a little bit. I'm not saying that you're trying to force us into anything, but that certainly would be a consideration from where I stand. Thank you.
Okay, any other uh, questions or comments from the council? Chief, anything else you'd like to add?
Nope. All right, you folks don't have any questions.
All right, uh, all right, thank you, uh, Mr. Watson. We really appreciate you taking the time to present to us. Uh, it is a good uh, product. I look forward to a point where we can get this through the finance committee and get a contract going and get it through our budget project process, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Conley, for attending tonight's meeting as well.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me.
All right, uh, with that, if there's nothing else, uh, anything else, councilors? All right, have a nice evening. Oh, Counselor Clement, do you have something? No, you're on mute.
The old sticky mute button again. Uh, I assume that we'll be discussing this at some point uh, at length as a group. I mean, this was just a presentation to give us background. I assume that the administrator and finance people, the chief are gonna be getting together and perhaps working up some kind of a proposal uh, that we might be able to address uh, in the interim. Am I, am I making a wrong assumption on that or?
I don't know. Dennis, do you have something for that?
Sure, I'm just simply, you're, you're spot on. I'll certainly circle back with our finance director, police chief. Um, have some uh, further discussions about uh, all of this and and we'll come back with a formal proposal about a process and and uh, how we recommend moving forward to that.
Any estimate on timeframe?
I don't think it'll be uh, too long. I would expect, um, I would expect for October, I, I don't think it'll be by the next meeting on the 20th. Um, so I would expect sometime in our first or second meeting in uh, November, we should have something back to you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. If there's nothing else, have a nice evening.